All righty. Roll call for the city council meeting of Wednesday, March 6th at 9:00 AM. Mr. Winarski, Ms. Allen, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Jones, Mr. Krotowski, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Witherspoon. Please rise for a moment of silent meditation and pledge allegiance.
Mr. President, I would ask that we go into this moment of silent meditation and remember those that are less fortunate than we are in our community locally as well as globally. Remember those who have lost loved ones since the last time we were in these chambers, and particularly one that was extremely close to me, was a mentor, just transitioned and passed two days ago, Sam Carroll. A great guy and a good friend, seventy-plus-year-old mentor of mine. So, let's remember his family. And also, we finally ask that we receive the right information and the best information so that we can make the best decisions for the citizens of the city of Erie.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Approval of minutes from the city council meeting of February 20, 2019, and bills for payment on March 1st and 8th, 2019. Ms. Allen, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Jones, Mr. Krotowski, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski.
Do we have somebody here this morning for a repository sale? Please come forward.
My name is Tom Freeman. I am representing Serv Erie this morning.
Good morning.
There are several openings on the repository list that we would like to obtain. I have a bunch of information that could be passed out to you, that you can take a look at it later on if you'd like. And the property that we are looking at is the corner of East 8th Street and Green Street. It is on the north east, I'm sorry, the northwest corner. There are two lots. And then on the northeast corner, there is one small lot there. If you look at the last sheet, which has the drawing on it, you'll see that we are also including two other lots that are on the east side of Reed Street. And those are with the redevelopment authority. And so, we contain those without the repository. And what we are going to be doing there is we are going to be working in the neighborhood. I assume that you probably all have heard of Serv Erie. What we are doing is we are working in the center-city section of Erie. And what we're trying to do is we're trying to build a place where the people who live there have a way to meet with city hall officials, meet in their area, because quite frankly, a lot of them don't have transportation to come here. They can meet with school officials, they can meet with the police, things like this. And we had one meeting, if I can mention it, that we had a person from city hall come down, and one of the complaints was about a nuisance bar up on Eleventh, East Eleventh Street, I think it was, and two days later it got shut down. So, it works. This is what we're trying to do. What we're looking at is we're also looking at putting our offices down there and storing in the basement for landscape tools, things like this that we have, that we use when we fix up around on Saturdays and clean up yards, help the neighbors, and help the people that live down there. Some of the area is going to be obviously used for parking. And that pretty much is it. We are meeting with three architectural firms this afternoon. So, we're going right into this. As far as budgets go, we're going to let the architect determine that because of a bunch of different things that can happen. But we already have $95,000 in the account, ready to go. And we are working on developing more through donations and grants and so on. I'd be more than willing to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is your architectural firm from the city of Erie by chance?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
It's a good point, yes, they are.
Mr. Freeman, is the property of 1st and Parade, are they moving everything to Reed then? Because there's that one building on 1st and Parade, I believe.
On Serv Erie.
1st and Parade? Yes. Is there a corner building over there that owned right now by Service Erie or Serv Erie? Or no?
The former store that was rehabbed.
No, okay. No, that is their offices, they are renting that from Best?
Okay, so they're probably going to move the whole operation?
Yes, they're going to move the whole. They're trying to make a presence in that neighborhood. The best way to do it is to be there.
Thank you for that good presentation on what your plans are for, after you get something through the repository sale. I wondered, do you, we sometimes have people who come before us and, you know, want a repository sale because it looks like an economical way to be able to, you know, get into homeownership sometime down the road. I think it would be really helpful to be able to share your experience with going through the repository sale process with other people who need that type of background as to, you know, where the resources are coming from. You're different than being a homeowner, but I think you're doing great work, and we know that that has been an issue with Blight, with people thinking, hey, I can get a bargain here, and then it becomes kind of overwhelming. So, thank you for all the forethought you put into this.
Yeah, that would be no problem at all. As a matter of fact, if I can get a little personal here, that I have owned a whole bunch of property, probably twenty-some units, down on the foot of Parade Street. So, we have bought property down in center-city area, we have rehabbed it, and it's been very successful. Just sold them all.
Great.
Thanks.
So, we have that. Mr. President, since we have Mr. Freeman here, do you have, you all have an idea of timeline, when you'd be able to move into the new space? Perspective, I know that's, you can't nail it.
It's going to depend on a whole lot of things. One is the architectural firm, and what we probably will do is we will probably build this in phases rather than all at one time, just because of the income and the money that's going to be required for this. So, we would like to start this summer late. Thank you.
Any other questions, council? Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Anybody else here this morning for a repository sale? Last call, anybody else here for a repository sale? Hearing none, move to citizens to be heard.
Greetings. My name is Tom Staszczeski. I live at 150 East 36th Street, here in our beloved city of Erie. I'm here this morning to address our city's finances and to offer some ideas of how we can get out of our economic woes and how we can dig out of that $11 million deficit that we're faced with as we operate our city. During recent months, I have been closely examining and studying other successful models from around the state as well as around the country, where cities such as ours have found themselves with an eroding tax base. And rather than our practice in this city of constantly taxing and taxing year after year after year, property owners, many of which are very much limited to fixed incomes, we have to look at other creative ways to generate some revenue. And what I'm talking about is I discovered some unique economic revitalization projects that are occurring as I speak, under the umbrella of Town and Gown Economic Revitalization Opportunity Zones, that are within the confines of a campus or a university that is operating in a city. And we hear a lot about our eroding tax base of nonprofits, we hear a lot about a loss of revenue on income. These universities that I bring to your attention have partnered together to revitalize the area, and we're talking about taxable income, jobs, new development, rehabs of properties. For instance, right here in Pennsylvania, if you look at the other corner of the state in Philadelphia, Drexel University and University of Pennsylvania, they sat down with city officials and they said, let's work together on a win-win situation where we can improve the area for the quality of life for everybody. Town and Gown, of course, means the university, the students, the faculty, the administration, and of course, that's of course the town. The Gown is the university. The town is the city government, excuse me. And now, at Drexel and Penn, if you go there to visit, you'll see a thriving surrounding area around those campuses. There are shops, there are commercial real estate developments with taxable income occurring, and it's a win-win situation for both entities. When councilperson Jones took over the vacant seat, I was glad to see his mention of pilots, payment in lieu of taxes. We need to expand that. Part of my examination of those university partnerships also showed that there are two other variations of pilots. One of those begins with an S, silence, services in lieu of taxes. We need to look at services from these operations. And one of your topics today may not be from a, it's anonymous, so we don't know, but how about a G, a G-ilet, gift in lieu of taxes. Gifts are, I would say we should welcome any kind of gift with open arms, whether it's anonymous, whether it's through a press conference, whether it's through one of those large cardboard checks handed off to the city officials, we should be welcoming that. I talked about the two universities in this city. Let's not forget, we have the presence of a third major worldwide university right here in our city. It occupies much of the bayfront on State Street, the bluffs. We often forget about the first two letters of UPMC, University of Pittsburgh is here. That's a $16 billion operation in revenue, just their brick and mortar, their hospitals. I examine all around the country hospitals that are located in cities that are doing same kind of economic revitalization. The University of Toledo, their hospital is now revitalizing the surrounding area, they're fixing up homes that are on a tax rolls, they're encouraging employees at those hospitals to move into those refurbished homes. They're building new homes surrounding their hospitals. Penn, University of Penn operates a hospital, they're doing the same thing there. In Big Ten country, in Michigan, Michigan State, University of Michigan, they operate major medical centers like us, like Hammett here, and they've revitalized those areas. They're not sitting back making a flimsy little payment, a pilot, they're doing a lot of tax generating. And also, as we look at those aspects, we should recognize Mark Tannenbaum at PACA. I was pleased to see Councilwoman Shaw yesterday at his press conference, I was there too, and we should recognize the fact that he willingly, on his own, with his board of directors, agreed to pay property taxes. Isn't that refreshing? A nonprofit paying property taxes. Let's encourage others. I encourage council to award him a proclamation, some kind of citation, some kind of, at least a thank you saying, PACA and Mark, thanks for paying your taxes. Good morning, thank you, and appreciate everything.
Good morning. Adam Trot, 531 West 6th Street, second floor. Several things I just wanted to touch base on quickly. Coming up Tuesday, March 12th at 7:00, is a community conversation at the Jefferson Educational Society. It is Erie CPR, talking about lessons learned from the Viaduct process. Among the agenda, besides talking about what things we need to fix here on how things are done, it's also talking about why we're still in the fight, why the fight is still going on. It's about process. The bridge is not there, but it's about the process that removed a critical urban asset from a neighborhood that desperately needed it. We also want to be sure we don't lose the footprint, so we can put something back. But we'll get into more detail there. I invite all of you to come and take part. Better than half the evening, it's going to be questions and answers. It's a conversation, the kinds of conversation that Boogie said City of Erie needs to have more of. Another thing I wanted to touch base on, the Restore Pennsylvania Initiative from Governor Wolf. This is another opportunity, like the opportunity zones, that Erie can take advantage of, but I caution, we need to take advantage of it in a strategic way, not just jump in and start bulldozing blighted properties. Every good community was made valuable by incremental change. You don't look for a silver bullet development plan, you do incremental infill projects to improve a neighborhood, and the Restore Pennsylvania can provide tools for us to do that. So, I implore council to learn about it and take a leadership role in helping guide the city on how to access another opportunity for Erie. And regarding the opportunity zones, there is an opportunity zone into 16503 area code, just east of the Viaduct. So, that doesn't really get talked about much, but it should be to help that area. I did want to mention that I happily, I can report, as many of you may know, Toledo passed the Bill of Rights for Lake Erie. Pittsburgh passed their Bill of Rights for the rivers back in 2010. So, you're starting to have this movement occurring all around Erie. It would be great for Erie to think about the same thing and get ahead of a trend rather than following ten years later. With that, happy March, and I wish you all the best.
My name is Freda Tepper. I live at 1731, 1738 West 23rd Street in Erie. I'm certified orientation and mobility specialist, and certified by Pennsylvania State University Master Gardeners, Pollinator Friendly Gardener. I just would like to ask the clerk, has there been any removal of any items from the agenda at the last minute? Are you allowed to answer that? Thank you. I wanted to mention yesterday, I participated in a webinar about safety, pedestrian and bicycle safety, and the Federal Highways Administration is offering training, four-hour training, and they are specifically addressing the topic of systemic versus spot safety measures. And systemic is addressing the causes of the unsafety rather than spending a lot of money on individual locations. I will be happy to share that information with Deputy Chief of Staff Lamis and the city planner. I'm here largely because as a, in a plant gardener, I want to commend you from, hopefully finalizing the long process of putting together a document that will enable those of us who choose to garden with native plants to do so without being at risk of being cited under the illegal fly ordinance or any other way. As I've mentioned previously, native plant gardening is a boon to our biodiversity, it provides seasonal and overwintering habitat for all kinds of beneficial insects, it provides food and cover for birds. Now, the insects, it's not just honeybees, it's not just cultivated bees, it's the native bees, and there's actually layers and layers of insects that eat each other as well as feeding off of our plants. And the native insects will, they will eat the leaves of native plants, but only in a reasonable amount. So, one thing that people have asked is, what is to keep people from saying, oh, great, now I can let my lawn just grow wild and just have a weed patch, or somebody who doesn't maintain their yard and claim that they're in compliance with this ordinance? It would, in a contentious situation, it might require the intervention of the city arborist to look at a garden and say, yes, this is clearly not an intentional native plant biodiversity garden, this is an overgrown weed patch. It might require that. People like myself who've chosen to go to the effort and expense of getting certified by a third-party organization and acquiring a sign at my expense, we can demonstrate what our intention is. I don't think it's unacceptable to allow those of us who are choosing to do something that will benefit us, and I didn't mention stormwater, this will, it benefits stormwater to have this kind of gardening because of the improved rainfall interception and infiltration, and this is the soil scientist in me speaking now. It also will result in less people needing to vacuum and leaf blow their perennial beds because a well-maintained native plant garden relies on maintaining these leaves and stuff in place over the winter. So, I just urge you to join in the multiple number of jurisdictions around the country that are recognizing the value to all of us in this time when we're concerned about biodiversity, climate change, air quality, stormwater, water quality, that this is a step forward, and I hope that you will approve this measure. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Honey Stempka, and I am the Executive Director of Environment Erie, and I too am here to just remind you of the benefits of allowing native plants in this ordinance, as some of you weren't present the last time this came before council. So, much like Freda mentioned, there are benefits to the stormwater absorption and filtration, and as we know, right, our stormwater infrastructure needs a little love, and so, this could delay possibly having to replace mass quantities of your stormwater infrastructure by allowing these native plants to be planted in the front yards. Also, as mentioned, providing additional support for pollinators, which of course is beneficial to our burgeoning urban farming movement within the city. You also have the benefits of possibly assisting in creating a sense of community and neighborhood connection for those that rent property. So, you know, perhaps they're able to plant in their front yards and feel more connected in a way that isn't quite possible because they can't do large-scale renovations or improvements on their physical property, their houses. Depending on where this is, you could be strategic, as I mentioned in the last meeting, about encouraging places that have high-speed traffic through those areas to plant in front yards and possibly slow-drown traffic, so that could aid in pedestrian safety. And if this is done decently and well, it also has the potential to possibly improve property values. As many communities that are attracting people to their downtown communities allow tasteful natural and native vegetation in their front yards and house strips, like people, people that are moving to those communities, those communities of choice, like those communities are allowing initiatives such as this. So, I know, once again, concerns, right, like Freda mentioned previously about just people letting their front yards go wild. Oftentimes, some of these places that allow these types of plantings, these types of plants, have developed design guidelines, much like you would develop design guidelines for buildings, for your facades. You could be a little bit more specific around developing some design guidelines for plantings. And too often, and this is kind of a broad sweeping statement, however, those that are interested in planting in this way are often conscientious of the way that their spaces look. So, I would say that your, people that are interested in planting this way aren't just going to throw out the seed and see what happens, they're going to be thoughtful and conscientious in the ways that they do this. So, just, I think there are many benefits to allowing this, and you can put some parameters in place to make sure that it's not a free-for-all weed area. So, thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Jerry Skripak. I have had the honor and privilege of being the president of Sons of Lake Erie for the last 25 years. And during that period of time, I've seen our bayfront make a completely changeable atmosphere down there. Things have changed, a lot of it to the good. We now have public access, we have some beautiful property. But something has taken place that kind of slipped through our notice, and it became evident when the Port Authority decided to tear down McAllister Building. And it wasn't just the building that was torn down, it was part of our fabric of something very important to us, and that's our waterfront. That building contained the last boat supply store located on the waterfront, and one of the last of the three full-service boat areas. And as president of Sons of Lake Erie, we not only take care of the bucket fishermen who fish from the piers, but we also worry about our boaters. You'll find in front of you roses, be kind enough to pass out a copy of an economic impact study that was made by Pennsylvania Sea Grant, showing that the impact of fishing in the Lake Erie watershed is $40 million. And that's a big part, it's a big industry. And by, part of our developments is we've had a tendency to take away the support for that industry. We have subsidized the convention center, we've subsidized the hotels that service the convention center, and we've even given outright grants even to private developers in order to build. However, we've also made these parcels tax-free, to our detriment. These entities have replaced, almost have replaced all of the prior businesses that were located on the west public dock. There was fish houses, there was boat building facilities, there was boat service and boat sales, bait shops, all been replaced by the convention center. And that's fine, that built that up. I think we have to take a look now and say, wait a minute, as there's not much development land left, and I think we need to look at the possibility of supporting maritime businesses by offering them an incentive to locate along a waterfront, because we need them. We need them to support that $40 million industry. I don't even have a chance to talk about or to look at how much our boating industry makes in this town. And I'm going to guess it's at least $20 million. There's $60 million worth of revenue that are coming into this community that we need to support. If you look at a chance, read through that study, there's a little letter attached with some of my thoughts. Thank you very much.
Good morning. My name is Sean Lynch. I live at 860 East 28th Street. I'm here this morning to appeal for support for the workers at the local lab tech plant that's presently out on Surry. We've had a tremendous output of support from the community. We've had a tremendous output of support from the community, physicians who have gone to the Union Hall to assist members and their families because their health care ended on February 26th. There are many Erie businesses, businesses in the city and their surrounding area who've donated food, coffee, water, hand and feet warmers, wood for burn barrels. And this is still just early on. Now today, the officers are in Wilmerding today to meet with the company, hopefully moving towards a, moving closer towards a resolution. This is barely 200 hours old, but it's been very frigid in two hours. I was there for an hour and a half last night, and at 15 degrees with even a 10 mile an hour wind, it goes through you. And the number of workers that were out there that, in the snowmobile suits and everything else, that were much better protected than I was. But these jobs at the Labtech plant are, have traditionally been family-sustaining wages that allow the workers to be supportive of the community as volunteers. I myself was a scout leader in the 80s and 90s, and the scout office told me that there were 90, over 90 people from the General Electric Plant at the time that were involved specifically with the Boy Scouts. I also spent time as a baseball coach, and other people who spent time coaching at all the levels, even up to the high school level. And we've seen the youth that we've entered grow into leaders of themselves, and this is more of the non-publicized benefits of the jobs, family-sustaining jobs, and the ability to have the time to volunteer in the community. Again, everybody's hoping for a quick and successful resolution to what's going on out there, but I'd like to thank everybody in the area who have been just wonderful.
Any other citizens to be heard this morning? Are there any other citizens to be heard? That, Rose?
Ordinances for final passage. Council File 16076, official ordinance number 162019. An ordinance appropriating the sum of $350,000 from unappropriated revenue received from a Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection Act 101, Section 902 Municipal Recycling Program grant, providing for the expenditure thereof. By Mr. Witherspoon, second by Mr. Wunarski, that Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16076, and now known as Official File Ordinance Number 162019, be finally passed by the City Council. Ms. Allen, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kowalski, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Wunarski. City Council pass Official File Ordinance Number 162019, finally by a 7, a 0. Council File 16077, official ordinance number 172019. An ordinance in accordance with the 2019 City of Erie Capital Fund budget, the sum of $100,000 is appropriated from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for use by the City of Erie. These funds will be used for expenditures incurred by the Police Department for the purchase of motorcycles. This money was donated anonymous anonymously for this usage.
Mr. President, I'd like to speak about this. Okay, I'd like to explain why I'm voting no on this. I did get answers from the City Finance Director to a series of questions I posed about this donation. I did not receive an answer on who actually made the donation, and I'm just going to read two questions and two of the answers. I said, "Who made the agreement with the donor? Did the donor approach the city or vice versa?" "The donor approached the mayor and the police chief with an offer to provide a donation specifically for motorcycles. The mayor and the police chief talked it over and agreed to receive the donation, as there were no strings attached other than the funding to be used to purchase the motorcycles." "Which people in the administration knew the identity of the donor? The mayor, the chief of staff, the city solicitor, the police chief and his command staff, members of the finance department, the controller, and two people in the treasurer's office." So first of all, we have a whole bunch of people who know this, the person or organization that donated it, but City Council does not know this. So, you know, I have some answers, but not all the answers. I'm glad I finally received those answers, but I want to point out why this is not enough. I've been thinking about why I ran for City Council, and part of the big motivation was participating in the Women's March in January 2017, and wanting to make a difference at the local level because of my deep concern about what was happening at the national level in the White House. I read a great interview the other day in a podcast with Mayor Pete Buttigieg, he's the mayor of South Bend, who I actually visited when I was running for City Council because he's been doing some innovative stuff on blight. And this is not a plug for him for his run for president, but he said he's running because he wants to preserve democracy. So think about that. And I also thought about the Washington Post motto, "Democracy dies in darkness." Now, I'm a former journalist, and journalists do their jobs because they're serving as watchdogs for the citizens who can't be everywhere. Elected officials are also supposed to be watchdogs for you, the citizens. And I came into City Hall the other day for an interview with TV about this donation, and although it was bitter cold, the sun was out, and it hit me, why can't Erie be the city of eternal sunshine, where we are transparent about everything? That is how you restore citizen trust in government. That is how you preserve democracy. That is how you promote inclusiveness. The motorcycle donation is a worthy contribution to our city's budget, but the administration should have informed us, your elected City Council, that it had chosen to accept this offer. Then we would have had a chance to press back and to ask, we could have asked the donor to come forward. So again, I'm going to remind you that democracy dies in darkness, and that what I brought up about this, it wasn't like Liz being off on some weird mission. I found a story in the Pittsburgh Post-Gazette from November after the shooting at, you know, the horrific shooting at the Tree of Life synagogue, and the story said that donations started to pour in, people wanted to help. So here's something from that story, it says, "Accepting such gifts can be tricky for a public entity like municipal government. Instead, the administration there decided to set up a public safety support trust fund with a clear designated purpose. These contributions can be tagged for training, equipment, and supply purchases." I do believe that the administration is now going to move forward with some guidelines and policy, possibly set up a fund, a trust, which was recommended in the Early Intervention Report in 2005, but because that has not been done, I'm voting no, just to take a stand because I think it's important that we do everything in the sunlight. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I intend to vote yes on this, but I see some of Ms. Allen's points. What bothers me is that for an anonymous gift, if it's true what she says, that the entire administration knows about it, then that is indeed wrong. It is wrong from the standpoint that when elected officials who are held to a much higher standard than the average employee are by law, they should be entitled to hear the truth, but also told not to, not to make it, not to put it out publicly if that's what the donor wants. I'm a little disappointed if in fact more people than the mayor and his assistant in his office know about it, because that is definitely wrong. That's not right under any standard and should never be. This is, this is something that we're elected by the people to represent it, and if we have to keep our mouth shut, and so be it, but we should be able to know the truth. I can understand we should have some standards, but in no way can I tolerate the amount of people I've heard know the truth. That's wrong. And I still intend to vote no, because I don't think there's anything wrong. In my 18 years there at council, we've had gifts in the past. I can understand why the person in question does not want their name out there. I'll give you one quick example. There's a gentleman named Palumbo, whose name is all over many colleges. He started out being a prime donor to University of Duquesne. He put his name on an arena, and then soon after, every Catholic university piled on, and even our own Gannon. I can understand that, I can understand people wanting to be anonymous. What I don't like is if it's true that many in the administration, almost all of them, knew about it. If that is true, well, I hope it isn't, but I, you know, my colleague here, she's heard otherwise, so I think it's something we need to discuss, the lack of communication between the administration and council, especially the president. If you want, you know, he should at least have been aware of it, if any of us. But I still intend to vote yes, but I think going forward in the future, we need to change a few things.
I'd just like to make a few comments. At budget time this past year, when we were faced with an $11 million deficit, we came up with a list of how many different ways we could increase our revenue so we're not faced with this in the future. And if something is small, which wasn't small to every vendor out there when we raised a vendor's fee by $100 to $100,000 donations, I believe that was on the list with possible donations. The last thing I want to do is create a roadblock or hurdle. If somebody wants to help the City of Erie, I personally don't care if it's anonymous or not, I will accept it and vote for it every time because we're not in that financial situation just to make it tough for people who also believe in this city to help us. This is an easy vote. I don't know why we even have to discuss it as much as we are. I want to thank that donor, and definitely vote yes.
Sponsored by Mr. Jones, seconded by Mr. Witherspoon. The Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16077, now known as Official File Ordinance Number 172019, be finally passed by the City Council. Ms. Allen?
No.
Mrs. Arrington? Mr. Jones? Mr. Kowalski? Mrs. Schoff? Mr. Witherspoon? Mr. Wunarski? City Council pass Official File Ordinance Number 172019, finally by a 6, nays 1. Council File 16078, official ordinance number 182019. An ordinance amending Article 1503.2112D of the City of Erie's codified ordinances to exclude certain native and/or natural vegetation from the definition of weeds in the International Property Maintenance Code. By Mr. Jones, seconded by Mr. Witherspoon. The Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16078, and now known as Official File Ordinance Number 182019, be finally passed by the City Council. Ms. Allen? Mrs. Arrington? Mr. Jones? Mr. Kowalski?
No.
Mrs. Schoff? Mr. Witherspoon? Mr. Wunarski? City Council pass Official File Ordinance Number 182019, finally by a 6, nays 1. Ordinances for first reading. Council File Number 16079, an ordinance in accordance with the 2019 City of Erie Capital Fund budget, the sum of $30,498 is appropriated from unappropriated and anticipated revenue for use by the City of Erie. By Ms. Kowalski, seconded by Ms. Allen. The Council File Number 16079, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the City Council. Ms. Allen? Mrs. Arrington? Mr. Jones? Ms. Kowalski? Mrs. Schoff? Mr. Witherspoon? Mr. Wunarski? City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance Number 16079, by a 7, nays 0, on Council File 16080, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $18,000 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received from the Enterprise Own Revolving Loan Fund for utilization in the Flagship Fund. By Mr. Kowalski, seconded by Ms. Allen. The Council File Ordinance Number 16080, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the City Council. Ms. Allen? Mrs. Arrington? Mr. Jones? Mr. Kowalski? Mrs. Schoff? Mr. Witherspoon? Mr. Wunarski? City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance Number 16080, by a 7, nays 0, on Council File 16081, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $15,650 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue and providing for the expenditure thereof, tobacco compliance grant. By Mrs. Schoff? Seconded by Ms. Allen. The Council File Ordinance Number 16081, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the City Council. Ms. Allen? Mrs. Arrington? Mr. Jones? Mr. Kowalski? Mrs. Schoff? Mr. Witherspoon? Mr. Wunarski? City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance Number 16081, by a 7, nays 0, on Council File 16082, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $162,000 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof. Contribution is from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Department of Community and Economic Development for the Early Intervention Program. By Mr. Jones, seconded by Ms. Kowalski. The Council File Ordinance Number 16082, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the City Council. Ms. Allen? Mrs. Arrington? Mr. Jones? Mr. Kowalski? Mrs. Schoff? Mr. Witherspoon? Mr. Wunarski? City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance Number 16082, by a 7, nays 0, on That'll take us to new business.
Mr. President? I would like to move the balance of the agenda.
All right, moving the balance of the agenda. Ms. Allen? Mrs. Arrington? Mr. Jones? Mr. Kowalski? Mrs. Schoff? Mr. Witherspoon? Mr. Wunarski? That'll take us to committee reports, Mr. President.
I was glad to hear Adam Trot mention Governor Wolf's Restore Pennsylvania initiative. I was invited to be part of a roundtable discussion yesterday in Northeast on the various components to restore Pennsylvania, and much of it did focus on blight. I think that one of the interesting things that I learned is that by going to Northeast, we heard from, an official from Northeast, we heard from a neighborhood initiative and the mayor of Corey, that these are common problems that have occurred in our region the mayor of Corey, that these are common problems that have occurred in our region and across Pennsylvania, but especially in our region because of the loss of population. And I suggested that, you know, perhaps we could join some time to do a tour of Northeast and a tour of Quarry and other places that are facing blight issues, because if we speak with one voice, if there are changes that need to be made at the state legislature level, we can speak with one voice. But I, I just thought it was really interesting to hear that other communities have enacted rental inspection ordinances, quality of life ticketing. So, some people think, you know, the City of Erie is just either, you know, picking on people or trying to do something that we're going off on our own, but other communities with very different demographics than Erie are also dealing with blight, and also thinking about how to do things besides just demolition. So, it was, I got to meet the new director for the Erie County Land Bank there, so there will be some good things coming out. It is not a sure thing that this is going to be, be passed. It has to go before the legislature. The governor has proposed using an extraction trap, tax to fund Restore Pennsylvania, which also includes some initiatives on extending broadband in places that don't have it now. We have a really good proposal from Kathy Rosdick, the city planner, it's been reviewed by the city solicitor, to create a historic task force, which would operate for a specific length of time to give direction to how we can preserve our historic resources here. Kathy Schoff and I have been continuing to meet with various people about equitable development and job training, and I went to the Jefferson Educational Society for the conversation, the release of the essay, which is a response to the, that 24/7 report about Erie being the, last year Erie being the worst city for African Americans. That essay had some short-term and long-term recommendations for how to address equity issues in Erie. One of them was ban the box on job applications. That would probably be something that would have to occur at the county council level, but perhaps we can lend our support to that. And there were a lot of recommendations about getting education going in the right direction. So, I always applaud the administration for seeing that connection, that, you know, the city doesn't operate on its own. The mayor's done a great job in having conversations with the school district about how to improve education in Erie.
Thank you, Ms. Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Winarski. I was able to attend the JFK Read Across America and met with Clifford the Big Red Dog and read to the children at the JFK Center. My teaching background, I love to be with children, so I am so fortunate to be invited to places where I can use my skills, so I had a great time reading to them. I went to the Erie Zoo Authority meeting. We had talked at the beginning of the year that we as council could attend the meetings even if we weren't the liaison, and I had never gone to a zoo authority meeting, so I was very pleased to listen in on their conversations when they talked about all the different doctors in Erie who examined the orangutan. I thought that was so interesting, and they did it pro bono. They just, you know, helped, you know, the orangutan in the zoo, and the zoo's on their way to get their fundraiser, the Zoo Palooza. I can't remember, that's how, Zoo, Gala Palooza. And so, they always talk about what a fun event that is. Mark Tannenbaum is really a visionary, I believe, and really should be commended about how he has organized PACA into restoring that building, and I am so thankful that the community is behind this. That's a beautiful building. He has many different organizations in there, and it's going to be on the historic register someday, so I commend him for all his work and his tireless energy that is put forth there. I was able to speak with Boy Scout Troop Thirty-Seven last Thursday evening and talked about being a councilperson and a typical day for myself, and I was so glad to do that. On Friday night, I went to art gallery night with my husband, and it's not just like about art, looking at all the different pieces and everything, but art gallery night is so fun, just being out, visiting the different places and socializing with people, and people are so friendly on art gallery nights. So, if you're a social person, it's a great thing. But we went to the Masonic Temple, and Doug Olson from the Masons gave us a tour of the Masonic Temple that was built in nineteen oh nine, and the only floor we did not go on was the very top floor that they were working on. And he was so knowledgeable. It was just a really great night of information. My husband was just so intrigued, and because of the time that we went, he really gave a lot of attention to us, and really, I encourage people to go to the different art gallery nights that Erie has, and I think this is an ongoing thing, that they do a tour of the Masonic Building. It's a great building. The Sons of Lake Erie, thank you for coming today. This past summer, I had gone on a Maine trip and went to Bath and Portland, where they are still using their port facility. So, I really believe that the fishermen, the boating industry really should be viable and a true part of our Erie. I sat in on the CDBG, the, last week or so, two weeks ago, and got caught up with that. We have so many great organizations helping Erie. Yesterday, Liz Allen and I went to the Preferred Systems Incorporated, located right here in Erie at thirty-five oh four State, and talked with Michael Chevalier and Kevin Arrington from A Plus Strategies and Corporate Solutions, and we had a long meeting with them. Oh, I can't be done yet. But, just to say, I really love being a city councilperson. Thank you for electing me, and I can't help all people, but I really love people, so call two eleven. If you're in crisis mode, you know, I am not available in the middle of the night or anything like that, but please know that there are services in Erie that will help you.
Yes, we attended two pension meetings this week, the officers and employees and the fire pension. Both have recovered from the terrible fourth quarter that most of the country exhibited, and they, they recovered all their losses and are back on good track and moving forward. We attended the CDBG hearing late last night, and want to thank the mayor and Chris Groner. We also attended the airport authority meeting last week, and while boardings and everything are up over there, there's still a little bit of problems concerning the fixed wing operators that, between them and management. The only thing disappoints me is there was a meeting with the administration and the mayor, of which I was invited to, but was unable to attend due to the scheduling on a bad day, both a council meeting and a budget session. That wasn't about to happen. I am still waiting to find out what was said at that meeting, and I have yet to find out. It's been about three months, I believe, pretty close to it. It has a lot to do with what's going on at the airport, and to be an effective liaison, I really need to know what happened. Otherwise, as my colleague Liz Allen says, there's a lot of darkness with little answers. We also attended the East Avenue Neighborhood Watch Meeting, along with Foila Jerry, who runs a very good program, and during the course of that meeting, there was a lot of conversation about the effectiveness of code enforcement, the rapidity or speed at which they answer calls. Once again, there was brought up about a vehicle which was abandoned for a few months. Now, there is no way that we should allow any vehicle to sit anywhere for over a week after it's reported, or two weeks, whatever the time period is. But once again, we had another vehicle. This is the second one this year. I hate to read about them in the media, but that's probably what will happen to them. In the meantime, there was a little disappointment in the fact that everybody was excited, only to find out that the quality of life ticketing is not being implemented yet due to some problems. Now, I sure hope the administration would have talked to council early during the budget sessions, when we had a chance to attack the situation. It would have taken some political courage, and maybe we would have had to raise some funds, but the program was intended by council, and Mr. Jones will remember when he and I pushed hard for this a few years ago, but the intent was to get it off and running. And here we are, March, and from what I understand, it may not be running much before the end of the year. That's unacceptable. If there's been a problem, we should have been made aware of it early. If it's a problem with software, we should have been made aware of it, so we could have allocated funds or worked with the administration to find those funds. To not have that program implemented disturbed a lot of people, and it's one of the reasons why, with all due respect, I didn't vote for a natural vegetation ordinance. I just don't feel our code people are qualified to determine a weed from natural growth. I think Ms. Gallaway is, and I'm not sure, judging by their past performance, that they're going to put any, any sense of urgency into enforcing that ordinance, much like many of the others. So, until, until I feel confident, I'm not, I'm not going down any more slippery slopes. And to the Sons of Lake Erie, I applaud their effort to save the McKellister Building. Ms. Allen and I spoke before the Port Authority passionately, to no avail. Had we had the ordinance that Mr. Brennan proposed many years ago, we probably would have had a thirty-day cooling off period, in which we could have looked at what to do with that. Now, I'm no expert, I don't know what to do with it. Maybe it could have been a market house, maybe it could have been a, a building with some sub leases in there, some outlets. We'll never know, because it's gone. But once again, a piece of Erie history, and when you're my age, you've seen them all tumble. I can't tell you the number of movie theaters I've seen tore down, or the number of buildings that had relevance architecturally, or historically, that are now gone. You can count the McKellisters as one of those. Maybe we couldn't have done nothing with them, but now we'll never know. So, I urge the solicitor, and I know he's doing a good job to get that ordinance moving, and we need to put something in effect before any more of Erie's landmarks enter that book that gets published and read once in a while about what Erie looked like. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Potowski. Councilman Jones?
I actually have a report this week. You're not going to get two meetings that lucky. Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to recognize Serv-Erie and their leadership and the work that they're doing in the community, working to revitalize portions of our city and, and staying local in the sense of staying in the city, that they're in the part of the city they're looking to serve. So, he wanted to recognize that. One thing I, I didn't want to bring it up, we go back and forth, but now I've talked to folks related to the project as they move forward, since they do a lot of facility improvements, that's a lot of what they do, facility improvements and painting, are they going to have a lot of their labor, I won't say donate it, but is it going to be maybe local folks, not just, you know, large construction companies, but local folks that would be able to kind of volunteer time to build that facility? You know, it would be interesting to see if some of the folks that do the renovations in other facilities through Serv-Erie would do the same for Serv-Erie. Just a side question or thought, if that's, that was something that was on my mind. We did have a meeting with the, I had met with and a few other council members in a few different groups, and met with the administration recently, and had, I thought, good conversation, some very significant issues, came up in conversation as far as bayfront development and improvement, early intervention plan that we passed, some legislation on today, the process of LERTA and what LERTA's looking like, and what that process is attempting to, to do, and how it's attempting to, to do it. I know Ms., my goodness, I'm having a brain freeze. I would get to be like Cass, right? Ms. Allen, excuse me, mentioned the, the historic, the task force, that was something that was talked about at our meeting as well, and so it's just good to see a lot of things moving forward. I had the privilege of reading to kindergarten students at Jefferson, that's why I'm wearing, I, my Jefferson mug, the mayor was there, multiple other elected officials, community members, and it was a great experience to be able to just see the bright-eyedness of children who are still excited about learning, and I was like a celebrity, they didn't know nothing, they didn't know anything about city council, I was just somebody new, and I must have been a little cooler than their teacher, so that might have helped. Seriously, it was great to be able to see those students excited about reading, excited about learning, and excited to, to have someone come and visit their space. And so, I think it's important that we give back in as many ways as possible, but just fifteen minutes in a room with fifteen to twenty kindergartners probably changed the trajectory of their, at least their day, for sure, and probably their week, and probably more than that, if we can do it in a consistent, in some, somewhat regular basis. So, I just want to encourage people to do that, or something like that. Gifts and, and donations, whether it be anonymous or not, I, I get it, right? I get the fact that we should know certain things, and I think there are sometimes reasons that make sense, and sometimes reasons that don't make sense, you know, why we don't know anything or know certain pieces of information, sometimes things slip through the cracks, I get it too. But I think we have to look at the greater issue sometime, and we as elected officials have a right to vote in any way we want, and I respect that, and we'll never, I'm just one of seven on this, on this panel, but, and I do get principal votes too, I get that, I totally understand that. But I think it's, we have to be careful, because there's a balance, because if we can cause more drama about donations, that could potentially limit donations and limit contributions. There's a fine line of my, of what we consider transparency, or lack of transparency and darkness, versus making people who want to give gun-shy on giving, and I think that we deal with a lot of that, and people who want to serve and volunteer, even serving on this council. We've had previous council members who went through significant ridicule, to the point where their jobs said that nobody in that organization could serve on certain councils or boards or committees publicly. So, there's a fine line, so I respect, but also want us to be conscious, to be careful not to make too much attention that would seem or be perceived as negative by those who are wanting to donate and give to our community. Quickly, someone mentioned the 24/7 report. Here's my thing, and I, I wasn't able to make that, even though I was in another meeting or something, I'm wrapping up. Yeah, that was, that thing is buzzing fast, maybe I'm talking slow. The, it was, the report's kind of weird, it's some weird things in it, didn't really flow, didn't seem real congruent in a lot of spaces, but here's one thing that I know, whatever we want to do, we find a way to do it, right? So, if Erie is the worst place for African Americans, or not, there are some issues that we have for, in our community, that we need, that we need to be more intentional about. Whatever we want to change, we have to be intentional about it, and I, like I told my children, my kids are a little older now, but I used to tell them, when I asked them to do something they didn't want to do, I said, "I want you to do it like it's something you want to do." Because if it's something you want to do, you're going to make it work. And so, I think if we want to make our community more inclusive... And so, I think if we want to make our community more inclusive, more welcoming, more even and have higher levels of equality and inclusion, then we have to be intentional about it, and we have to do it like it's something we wanted to. And my last, last, I have an intern that's working with me here, he's come back, he was doing some things in the summer, Blake Johnson, so he is here in the audience, so I want to acknowledge him and thank him for being back. I think he sat at that table earlier in the year, or last year, so he's back, he's going to be doing some things and maybe come to see you at some point, flash, flash. All right, thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for the extra time.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Witherspoon?
Thank you, Mr. President. As they say in Congress, I yield the balance of my time to Mr. Jones.
All righty, then, since he's, no, I'm just kidding.
I had the opportunity of meeting with some officials from Gannon University. We reviewed, we overlooked the Bayview Park on Second, Chest, Second and Cherry. Gannon received a grant. Dave Moverhill was present, and we plan to do a big fix-up. Price, you know, we'll, we'll put in a little money, but Gannon is doing the majority of the work, put the shower, the shower, whatever, where the kids play and the water just rings out. They're going to move the shed that they have, picnic area, they're going to move it away from the cliff area for safety reasons. They're going to redo the tennis courts, they're going to redo the basketball courts. We talked about a collage of the community on the court, basketball court. That means we're going to try to find some old pictures of the neighborhood, hire local artists and, and community folks, and that would go on the court, so you'll have Brig Niagara on one side, the north part of the court, you'll have houses, you'll have a street, running Second Street, Bayview, and I think that will give some pride to that area. And the purpose of Gannon doing this as a partner, they want the community to use that park, they want to make it very usable. The Pontiac baseball team was a African-American team that used and played down there. We're looking at doing a bronze plaque. Mr. Howard Bibbs has a picture of the Pontiac, we want to put a bronze for it, put a history of it, and maybe put some individual pictures of the Pontiac, Mr. Wright, Sam Jethrow. Yeah, Willie Grace, of course, and so, we're talking about doing this this spring, this summer, and I will keep you posted on that. I want to compliment Mr. Groner and Debbie for the fine work they do with the CDBG. They make an excellent presentation, they answered all the questions, they, they are very professional in what they're doing, and I just want to give them kudos for sure. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Witherspoon.
Mr. President, can I just, real quick, I just wanted to thank Curtis again for mentioning that essay, and it is available for download, the essay, jeserey.org, so you can pick up a copy of it or you can download it, and if you, it's, you know, fairly easy read, but if you get to those recommendations, there's long-term and short-term recommendations, and I do think it would be helpful for city council to look at those recommendations and to see, you know, what is our role in advancing equity, so.
Thank you. Only comment I have today is, we did attend the CDBG study session, just like Mr. Witherspoon said, Chris and his staff did a great job with presenting the ways the money could be allocated. We will vote on that as a council. One question I will have and do have still is, you did mention that the city can use up to a certain percentage, roughly twenty-one percent, towards city operations, or things that would help city, whether it be public safety, curb cuts, paving. You sort of left roughly a hundred to a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars that we could have possibly used for our stuff, and we gave it away, or we're possibly going to use it in other areas for other things, but that may be monies that's left on the table that could possibly get the Quality of Life Ticketing Program into play here a little more. But it's one thing I'm personally going to look at and talk to Mr. Groner about to see if we can do something there, but other than that, it was definitely a well-professional presentation they gave, and look forward to working with them. That's all I have. Next controller?
Good morning. The only thing that I wanted to touch on was number three hundred, new business, that was the three hundred thousand dollars that we received from Keystone Communities from the State Department of Community and Economic Development. I just wanted to clarify, that was reported, that it was a grant to the Renaissance Center. It's not, it's a grant to the city. The city will be loaning those funds through the Enterprise Loan Fund under the umbrella of Chris Groner's organization and his loan board. Will be loaning that money to the Renaissance. As they pay that, as they make those payments back to the city, that funding will remain in the revolving loan fund, and we will be able to continue to loan it out, so essentially we got a grant from the state for three hundred thousand dollars that will, that will grow our loan fund. Thank you.
Just going to ask Ms. Lamas, could we introduce the young man that we had the privilege this morning?
Okay. Sitting in the front row here is my son, Nico Lamas. He's on spring break this week, and he is, he is chief of staff for the week, so he's my little shadow. We're having a good time, most of the time.
Welcome there, young man. Bet you there's a lot of other things you'd rather be doing right now, but just saying, but thank you all for coming out today, and that should do it.
City Council adjourns at ten eighteen. Mr. Winarski, Ms. Allen, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Jones, Mr. Potowski, Ms. Schaff, Mr. Witherspoon.